Still a few more minutes.
Yeah.
Let's see here.
Parents, parents.
I would like in support if you're. I'm beautiful.
For you to be an athlete.
And I want you to be it next time, so I don't think I don't think. If you have to retire. I don't think you do both.
I know.
But you just gotta retire your.
Well, perhaps I was.
Was that what you said?
I don't understand why it's.
This is. Six and a quarter. It gets to fifteen.
You read that, right?
Sorry. One point six.
That has to say. Reading. College.
That weird.
Yeah. I decided.
Yeah. Well, I'll be gone for two weeks. Be back. I'll be here Thursday.
Throwing a little wrinkle. Tell us here. Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Ready? Suzanne, thumbs up. Call to order the July seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen regular city council meeting of Woodland Park. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Harvey?
Here.
Bravetto?
Here.
Carlson?
Here.
Matthews?
Here.
Sawyer?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Thank you, and if you can join me now.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And welcome to all. We're gonna start off our agenda this morning or this afternoon with swearing in ceremony of our new teen court volunteers, and I'm gonna turn that over to our city clerk Suzanne, and she will give you a little bit of a background on that process, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you. What I would actually like to do this evening is call Beverly Hodges up to the podium. She's going to introduce the teen court kids. Beverly is the teen court coordinator, and she's going to tell you a little bit about the process and the training that these young people have gone through.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
Like to thank you this evening for taking time to include us in your agenda. Teen Court is a program that's been going on for several years in Woodland Park. I think most of you know about Teen Court. It's for first-time juvenile offenders who have committed a misdemeanor crime, and we feel like that Teen Court would do them justice going through the program instead of being. They do get charged, but if they complete the program successfully, successfully, then the charge is expunged from their record. So this evening, we have two new volunteers. They're going into ninth grade this year, and they both wanted to volunteer as attorneys. So I have one that will be defense attorney and one prosecuting attorney. And they went through classroom training of a couple days, and then here we had a trial that they participated in. So our first volunteer is Sylvie Vogel. Sylvie, if you want to come up.
Let's call them both. Pardon? We'll call them both, we'll swear in both at the same time.
Yes. And our second volunteer is Gracie Forbes.
Prosecutor?
Okay, I'm going to swear you in now as official officers of the teen court program. So raise your right hand. I'm gonna repeat your name after I. Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Colorado with charter and ordinances of the city of Woodland Park and faithfully perform the duties of the office of teen court volunteer upon which I'm about to enter. That's a lot to say. Let's get you to sign these right here. How do you sign them? So Sylvie.
Suzanne, I have a couple of the coveted Woodland Park kids to give to our new ladies of the law. I don't know if our city attorney has any words of encouragement, but maybe someday we'll see one of you up here.
Somebody just sign right here.
Why she's going to the, who's the prosecutor?
The council's.
Gracie in the white.
Oh, got it wrong.
Okay. Sign it. We'll have Miss Hodges sign it, and then Gracie sign right there.
The first of the illegal.
They can have this, okay? There you go.
I think I'm just getting this one.
Thanks for your time, too.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda. Suzanne?
There are none, Mayor Protem.
That's good, then we'll move on to the consent calendar. And again to you, Suzanne.
This evening, we need to approve the minutes of the July third, two thousand and fourteen regular meeting.
Are there any corrections, additions, deletions to that record? Entertain a motion?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We'll go to a vote now.
Bravetto?
Oh, yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
I wasn't here, so I don't think I should vote, probably.
Okay, Sawyer?
I was not here either.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries for nothing, zero.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to item number eight on the calendar, and that is an initial posting for ordinance number twelve seventeen and set for public hearing on August seventh, and the title of that ordinance is parking lot signage enforcement. This is an initial posting, so we will not hear public hearing tonight, but I'll turn that now over to David.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This is an ordinance on initial posting this evening. Just a quick bit of background. We were dealing with an issue in the downtown area, and as we did some research associated with that, we found that we did not have an ordinance that directly related to enforcement of city signage in some of our public or community parking lots. For example, we have in some parking lots no parking on snow days because we need the ability to store snow in parking lots in certain areas. We have some signage for compact cars, et cetera. So this is an ordinance that would rectify that. We worked with our code enforcement officer who did some research in some other municipalities, and of course, we incorporated our city attorney. And again, this is on initial posting, and it's our recommendation that you would accept this ordinance on initial posting and set the public hearing for August seventh.
What questions do you have with staff? Hearing no questions or comments from the council for staff. I will entertain a motion then for the initial posting.
I move we move forward with it.
Second.
Do we need to read the entire title into the record?
I don't believe so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Go ahead and take the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Okay, on to item number nine. Just moving right along here. This is for public hearings, and we have to read this statement into the record about public hearings. Council members use electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us, except for me, because I'm old-fashioned and I like to print it off. But be assured, that is the common practice of the city council, that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during those public hearings. So item nine A is to approve an application for Otter Tail Corporation DBA, the Circle H Smokehouse for a beer and wine liquor license located at seven twenty West Browning Avenue. And Suzanne, back over to you again.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As Mayor Protem Harvey said, this is for the Smokehouse. They're located at seven twenty West Browning Avenue. They have met all of the criteria and have had no complaints or any concerns against them in the past years. So we recommend as a staff that you approve their liquor license.
And Suzanne, as I recall, they've had that license for over twenty years.
Yes.
Just a technicality and a lapse, and this is really status quo.
That's correct.
Any other questions for Suzanne? Again?
I move approval.
I'm sorry, we do need public hearing on that. Open it now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I got anxious, too.
We're just moving right along.
We'll now open for public hearing on this ordinance. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. We'll now move.
I'll reapprove, apply for approval for the Circle H Smokehouse permit.
I'll second.
Thank you. Take a vote, please.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne. Item nine B is ordinance number eleven ninety-six, and that's concerning a request from Teller County Waste for the approval of a conditional use permit, special use permit in a site plan review for the purpose of operating a business to provide contractor services, vehicle repair and maintenance, and a recycling collection center located in the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of the section twenty-five, township twelve, south, range sixty-nine, west of the sixth principal meridian, more specifically, one thousand and ten fifty County Road two thirty-one, which is West Street, Woodland Park, Colorado, containing one point eight three acres as requested by Jay Baker, who is the owner of Teller County Waste. And I'm gonna turn this over to Sally, but I believe we are going to table this.
That's correct, thank you, Mayor Protem. The applicant is requesting to table to August twenty-first. This will give him the opportunity to work with Teller County Public Works to reach a technical solution to mitigate any identified impacts on West Street. So we will be prepared to hold the public hearing next month on August twenty-first.
Thank you, Sally. And since this is being tabled, will the motion be to table only?
Yes.
To the date certain of seventeen, or excuse me, August twenty-first?
I move to table ordinance eleven ninety-six to a date certain of August twenty-first.
Second.
Two thousand.
Vote, please.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thanks, Sally. All right, item ten, new business. Under new business, Mr. Wiley will come to, or will brief us on Resolution seven seventy-eight establishing a four-inch commercial tap for the Andrew Womack Ministries Charis College Bible, or Bible College project. Kip?
Thank you, good evening. Resolution seven seventy-eight is a method to establish the price for a four-inch tap, commercial tap. Our code doesn't have values for a four-inch tap, it only goes up to a three-inch tap, and we bring a price to you for your approval. First couple background, some background on tap fees. Tap fees consist of four different fees. It's water plant investment fees, sewer plant investment fees, water rights fees, and physical connection fees. Our code does have a value for the water rights fee for a four-inch tap. Physical connection fees are established by the cost of the materials, and those change on an annual basis when materials change and fluctuate. So we set those as the cost for those at the time. So those two fees are pretty much set. It's the sewer plant and water plant investment fees that we'll be discussing. How we did this is we simply plotted the fees that we currently have, and sewer, the tap fees are calculated off a multiplier of the base fee. So as the size of the tap increases, the multiplier for the tap increases. When you plot those and graph a line to that, you get an equation, and you can simply extrapolate that equation out for a four-inch tap, and that gives you the value of the multiplier. In this case, we got a multiplier of sixteen point oh seven three six. We feel this method and logic is very defendable, makes complete sense, and that's why we're presenting that to you tonight. And the resolution is the breakdown in fees, and it breaks down the base fee for each water and sewer, and then water rights and physical connection is addressed because we don't know what it is until we actually purchase the materials for that. In this case, physical connection fee ballpark, we have a ballpark of around fifty-three hundred dollars, and that's the cost of the meter and some other miscellaneous parts. If you have any questions, in the staff report, I presented to you guys the graph, the equation, how it was broken down. I can answer those. Another thing to add is they already have a two-inch tap for the existing building, and they would like to upgrade that to a four-inch tap. And how that works is the value, what they, the value of the two-inch tap minus the value of a four-inch tap, so they simply pay the difference between the two. Yes, sir?
Okay, our city has a certain number of dwelling units, I guess, that we can issue tap fees and not exceed our water rights, the amount of water that we have. Does this change, affect that total? If the quantity that's been being consumed here, you know, for instance, if we have enough room still for another five thousand houses, by doing this, would it come down to four seventy or fifty, or how does that work?
Just as you said it, we have a number for residential homes, but not commercial. We believe residential homes drives the commercial developments within town, so they come hand in hand when we look at overall water usage together. Yes, sir?
Do you have any feedback from the applicant? Are they okay with everything?
And as far as the.
The fee?
I have not presented the fee to the applicant.
Okay, so no discussion has occurred with them?
The only discussion that occurred with the applicant is the size of the tap to determine what size was needed.
Okay, and this, I am assuming is for construction that will begin in two thousand and fourteen or two thousand and fifteen?
I believe they've already applied for their foundation permit, and the building permit will be coming shortly after that. And in the building permit, the tap fees will be assessed.
Do we set the fees, or do we negotiate the fees? I'm going back to Ken's question.
I think we set them.
Okay, so then there is no reason to.
I just was curious if we had some feedback from them, but I guess not. Not that matters, I guess.
Only that we need your permission to let them know what that fee is. And that's what the process is. You do set the fees, and that's what the logic is.
This is the fee.
They're well aware of what the price was for the two-inch, they know what the three-inch is, they know it's gonna be more than the three-inch. We've not had any negative feedback associated with that.
The only guidance in our code basically says that any size tap over a three-inch must be ten times the base fee. And this is sixteen point seven three six.
So the difference they would be paying is the two seventy-nine, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand less the seventy-nine thousand that they've either paid or been.
Yeah, they have already paid the seventy-nine thousand, seventy-nine and some change. Simply that minus the two seventy-nine, so around two hundred thousand.
All right, are there any other questions for staff? This is.
Is there public comment on this?
Say again?
Is there public comment on this?
No, there's not on our resolution. If you have no further questions for staff, and as this is a resolution, we can now accept a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion?
Move.
Oh, if you want.
Move to approve Resolution seven seventy-eight establishing a four-inch commercial tap fees for the Andrew Womack Ministries Charis Bible College project.
I'll second, I guess. Oh, if you want to, I'll second it, okay.
You're so polite. Vote, please.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Move on to item ten B, which is a consideration of an application for a temporary use permit for polymorale for an outdoor event known as Movies Above the Clouds on the Upe Past Cultural Center Green to end by ten fifteen PM on July eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, and also on August fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen. And Lisa, over to you.
Good evening. This is a request for a temporary use permit that would exceed the nine PM threshold, and when that happens, we come to you per the guidance in section eighteen point six-two, which requires city council approval for any event that takes place after nine PM. They are going to have a movie that will start when the sun sets, and since the sunset doesn't really occur until between eight-thirty and nine PM, they're starting that movie after nine PM. It'll go past nine PM, and it'll end right, they're going to end it at ten fifteen PM. So we're just requesting, I should say also that city staff has reviewed it, hasn't found any concerns with it. We also sent out public letters, adjacent property letters, on the tenth of July, as well as posted signs. We haven't gotten any feedback from that public notification process. So we're recommending that you approve this temporary use permit to exceed the nine PM threshold, so.
Staff questions, or questions for staff? John?
This is intended to be a family activity?
It is, yes. And I actually did have a representative, the applicant, here, but you guys have gone so fast tonight, they slipped out, and they're not back yet. So, but I did talk to them right before this, and my understanding is that the movie is gonna be the Lego movie, so very family-oriented for you, so.
Food and drink provided, and bring your own?
They, I know that they do have, they're going to be serving liquor, and there's a liquor special event permit that's connected with this activity. I do not believe there is food that's.
I know there's free popcorn.
Oh, is there free popcorn?
Yes.
Suzanne?
You're welcome.
Yes.
Is this the Upe Past Cultural Center Green, or is the?
It is, it's on.
Pavilion?
Well, it's at, the movie will be shown on the stage at the pavilion, and then everyone will be seated on the green, so it's literally an outdoor movie.
I was wondering what the official name of that area was, because.
Yeah, you know, Midland Pavilion on the Green is what I've heard the most, Cultural Center Green, so. Is there any other questions that I can answer? Should be fun.
No, I have no more questions. We have no more questions? Again, a resolution does not require a public hearing. I'm disappointed we don't have the applicant here, because I'd like to hear more about why they chose that.
No.
It's okay. So I'll entertain a motion then to approve the resolution.
I move to approve temporary use permit.
Excuse me, temporary use permit.
What?
I'm sorry, I misspoke, temporary use permit.
For the outdoor event known as the Movies Above the Cloud at the Upe Past Cultural Center Green.
Second.
Vote, please.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. I'll move on now to item eleven, which is public comment not on items, not items not on the agenda, and we have two individuals that have signed up to make a public comment. April and Brian, do you want to come up separately or together? Okay, and when you come to the podium, please state your names and your addresses.
My name is April.
Uh, my name is April McMickinbabin. My address is twelve seventy-six Terry Lane, Woodland Park. I'm here to set the record straight. My school students who are customers have not parked in the directly behind one oh eight West Midland Avenue, which is Curves, for the past one and a half years. Two years ago, there was an issue and the students parking in that lot. However, I have handled this issue. The city should recognize the effects that we have taken and the effort we have taken to solve this parking problem.
Hello, I'm Brian Babbin, live at twelve seventy-six Terry Lane. I'm, this is the young lady's husband. I speak on behalf of Summit Salon and Beauty School. We are pleased to see the city is moving forward with an ordinance to address the community parking lots. We have trust in the city council to post signs in necessary situations. We ask that each sign is addressed with realistic common sense on why we need a sign for a particular issue, being the parking issue. It is easier to build a wall than it is to take one down, as we all seen in history. We have a policy in the making at Summit Salon and Beauty School, where our students will no longer park in the parking lot east of Summit Salon, which is also north of Curves. This is a concession we are voluntarily offering. However, we are concerned that this will cause harm to the businesses on Center Street, which are Bliss, Help the Needing, Seven Arrows Art Museum, and the currently empty building formerly known as Bucks. The reason for that is that those parking lots over there are used by them also. So if we move to the north of Summit Salon Beauty School, we are taking parking spaces. In the past, our efforts to change the parking culture among the students and our employees have gone without being noticed by the city. We have proof that we have made strides. We continue to make strides and we're trying to move forward to resolve any issues. Please understand though, that we do have customers that do come into Summit Salon Beauty School and do park in the public parking lot. And we'd like that to be recognized also. We are for the easement agreements. The easement agreements show a great partnership between C dot, City of Woodland Park, and the owners of the properties. The partnership has provided a great place for public parking for our citizens, guests, and our visitors. We would like that to be also recognized that the visitors aren't confused when they show up and see different signs that they don't understand where to park. However, with those easement agreements, we have discovered a problem. I recommend that the easement agreements be discussed and new agreements implemented for all property owners, as they are coming up to be due. The language in each easement agreement changes for basic compliance and enforcement. This uneven set of agreements, which, which conflicts with one of the other agreements, doesn't make any sense. Our research also shows one owner has an easement agreement. However, the owner has stated to me that they do not have an easement agreement. The other comment that they made, they stated they can do whatever they want on their private property. And they're talking about the easement agreement property. Now, during our research, we found the easement agreements are for all the property owners from Park Avenue to Center, Center Street, and from Center Street to Pine. I know there's probably others, but I'm just looking at those. In the easement agreements, it states the entire improved area is known collectively, collectively as the Public Pedestrian Plaza. The agreement states the Public Pedestrian Plaza shall be for public use. We, and we would assume on behalf of all in the community, ask the city to request anyone using the Public Pedestrian Plaza for events to serve food or alcohol on public properties be regulated by the appropriate licenses, permits, and abide by the local, state, and federal rules during their event. Being a property owner in the City of Woodland Park, we request the proper taxes for these licenses are collected. If anyone is not under the easement agreement, we request the city collects the appropriate taxes, the revenue, on that piece of property. Because anyone not on the agreement or does not abide by the agreement, or the city no longer has possession of this property, this portion of the property would no longer be tax exempt. The benefits for those not under the agreement should be terminated by the city. This would be fair to everyone along there and who has an easement agreement. Thank you. You have any questions?
Brian, would you make, are those printed, typed, written?
Yes, ma'am.
Make those available to our city clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
And invite you back then for the hearing on the twenty-first of, what's it, twenty-first?
Seventh of August for the ordinance?
Yes, the seventh, please.
I'm not real concerned about the ordinance too much. I think it, I, I, I think the city should have the power to enforce parking violations and parking things of that nature. I just can, I'm concerned about the signs being up because I think it deters people from visiting.
If, if you could, um, though, make those comments available to the city clerk.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. That brings us to the mayor's comments. And I have some. And they're all about things that are going on in town. Friday, July the eighteenth, twenty-fifth, and August the first, from seven A M to one P P M is the farmer's market. And if you haven't gone yet, you need to go. I always go spend too much money there, but it's always worth it and it's a great Friday morning. Also on the eighteenth, uh, we have our third Friday art walk downtown. And on the twenty-fifth of July, which is also a Fri- like Friday, we have the relay for Life Teller County. And if you need more info on that, it's at six three zero four nine seven eight. I'm not sure I know that much about that relay, but if you're a runner, I'm sure it's, it's relevant to you. On Saturday, July twenty-sixth, uh, the Woodland Park Alumni All School Reunion will occur. And on Saturday again, July twenty-sixth, Mountain of the Sun Festival at Aspen Valley Ranch. And the number for that, if you want more info, is six five zero five nine two zero. And I'm sure those are all area code seven one nine. Saturday, July the twenty-sixth is Coach D Day. And that's, uh, again for info is three three one three six four zero. August the second is the Seventh Annual Vino and Notes at Woodland Station Downtown in Woodland Park. Six eight seven four 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 seven for more info. And then finally on Saturday, August the second, and Sunday, August the third, is the Twenty-Ninth Annual Mountain Arts Festival at Ute Past Cultural Center. And remind me again of the bike event, what are the dates for that?
The USA Pro Challenge?
Yes.
August twenty-second. The team from the USA Pro Challenge was here today to, to do an update with our local organizing committee. Everything looks really great. On the cover of the Courier was a full schedule of events. The first event actually begins August fifteenth, the Friday before, with the Movie Above the Clouds. And then there are daily events, um, up to the twenty-second. So it's August twenty-second and things are really looking very, very good at this point.
Great. And were there, um, still sweatshirts and cowbells to purchase?
Oh, there's going to be all kinds of things to buy, t-shirts, hoodies, cowbells, but thunder sticks are free.
All right, uh, I know David's got a couple of things he wants to share with us tonight, but let's go ahead and, uh, see if we have anything from the council, Mr. Bu- or Mr. Bravetto.
Uh, two things, I guess. There's a group of us, four of us, uh, wrote to the Main Street Program. Brian, myself, Gary Crane, and Vera Egbert, they're, they're the co-chairs for Main Street Program. We personally hand-carried our application up there to Denver, to the executive director of DOLA. That's a big deal. So we got face-to-face contact with him. So we got, they got the electronic version a couple of days before that. But we figured, we figured it would be, you know, kind of nice if we showed some face contact. And I think that's important and I think, I hope that goes a long way in, in getting us approved for Main Street. There are six, six towns applying for it, only two can be selected. So we're, you know, we're competing against some very high-level people. But I think, I think we stand a very, very good chance, so we'll see what happens there. So we're looking forward to that. The decision, uh, was made, was it August first it was made? But we won't know for maybe, any day now, actually, we'll probably know, uh, whether we've been selected or not. Woodland Park Arts Alliance slash Woodland Parks Arts District, um, they had a meeting the other night, the board of directors. I was pleased to find out that, uh, they are really moving forward on a lot of arts district events. In fact, they got with Sally Riley, I, I believe, in talking about design standards and everything. And I think the city is going to be using our experts, who are the creative arts district, to help with design standards. And I think that's really an encouraging move. That's, that's how we can really, really, you know, utilize the, the assets we have here in Woodland Park. And we do have a lot of, a lot of talented people that can offer advice and so we, we can build a better community. I'd encourage you all to go to their website, the Woodland Park Arts Alliance website, because we talked about giving a reason for people to come downtown to Woodland Park. Well, on that website gives you an idea of some of the activities they have that will give you a reason to come downtown. Uh, one of the ones is the Manitou Chamber Music, which is August second. Uh, there are two talented artists, uh, very high-level people, uh, that will present chamber music at the Highview Baptist Church on August second. So get on the website, you can get your tickets there. Uh, it'd be a tremendous event. It's bringing like New York City to Woodland Park, basically. So, I mean, I think that'd be a feather in our cap. But go on their website, there's a lot of activities you can get involved in. Of course, the art walk, Friday Night Art Walk will be on there and, and other events at the Woodland Park Arts Alliance is, uh, is forming, so that's all I got.
Thanks, Gary. Mr. Carlson?
I assume one of David's subjects will be the, uh, selection of mayor? Okay, so I don't need to talk about that?
Mayor's Cup, the running for all you runners will be on the ninth. Forgot that.
What runners?
Of course, of course. Pike's Peak Ascend on the sixteenth and Marathon on the seventeenth for all you runners out there. Don't forget that. And that's all I have at the moment.
John?
Yeah, I want to announce that the Mountain View United Methodist Church is going to be, uh, holding a symposium on August ninth. Subject is, uh, human trafficking. And in fact, uh, that has become a multi-billion dollar business around the globe. And if you think it's not happening here in Colorado, uh, you ought to come to the symposium and learn that it is. And, uh, if we have any copies left over, it would be nice to give some to the audience. Probably didn't give you enough. So it's going to be from nine A M until two P M and a continental breakfast and a light lunch will be provided. And the symposium is free. And so I would encourage you to talk this up a bit among, uh, friends and neighbors and, uh, we look for a good turnout at the church then. Thank you.
Thank you, John. City attorney's report. Turn it over to David then.
Thank you. We've got two listed and then I've got two to follow after that. So Bill, give us an update, please.
Okay, well, good evening. Uh, I wanted to just take a few minutes to update you on some of the significant projects that we've, uh, been accomplishing throughout the city during this active construction and monsoon season. These projects were all, uh, had funds approved for them in the two thousand and fourteen budget. Uh, this week, we completed our chip seal resurfacing. Uh, we put down approximately one hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred square yards of, uh, three-eight inch chip seal throughout the, this kind of north quadrant of, of the city. A one chip seal, once again, they've been with us for, um, since two thousand and eight, did an outstanding job for us in, uh, getting that down in a quick and efficient manner. Um, we've also completed resurfacing of Centennial Trail. Uh, we managed to get two sections done this year from Red Feather to Kelly's and, uh, from Valley View to, uh, Apache Lane. Schmidt Construction completed that work for us. And we're also exploring, uh, seal coating and additional section of trail, um, yet this season. The, the asphalt's in pretty good condition. Bids have come in pretty reasonable, so we're exploring doing that. And that'd be from Lake Avenue to Gunnison. We completed a significant repair on Thunder Ridge after water main break there this past winter. Schmidt Construction completed that paving, uh, six hundred and thirty-five square yards of paving. Behind us, the city hall parking ride lot is progressing nicely, but, uh, the monsoon has certainly affected the, uh, asphalt paving of that facility. And hopefully next week, if the weather cooperates, we'll get the, the asphalt down and get that project finished up. And finally, uh, the West Street Sidewalk Project, we have completed the design of that and we're gathering bids for that. And we'll see how the bids come in and if it's, uh, something that we can do with the money that you've budgeted for that project. And, uh, with that, that's what we've been doing in public works, yes, sir?
About the right turn D cell lane onto Sheridan, I see the work just started on that.
Yeah, that's being done by Trail Ridge, uh, contractor. Uh, that work is started and, um, is moving along, started this week.
But the funds for, have come from the city, uh, collectively from all the various, um...
Tra- the traffic impact fees, you're correct.
Yeah. So I was just wondering how that, how, what the cost is compared to what we budgeted for it.
I don't have that information in front of me.
Okay.
So. Say that, uh, we did contribute funds to that, but the developer is building that project.
Another curious question. On, on the, uh, parking lot back there, there's a big concrete apron there?
Yes.
What, what is that for?
Well, that concrete paving is there for the trash trucks because there's a trash dumpster there. And if you're familiar with asphalt pavement, you know, the heavy trucks and turning and things like that, uh, is degrading to asphalt pavement. So on that turning pad, we paved that with concrete.
I thought maybe we were going to have some energy-efficient fuel station there or something, so, okay.
Trash dumpster.
What's the timeframe on the Sheridan turn lane?
It's going to be kind of weather-dependent.
Yeah.
But it'll be, uh, probably a couple of months before it's all done. They're working smartly, uh, but, uh, again, weather shut them down on Monday.
Oh, yeah. Shut everybody down. Okay.
Bill, what are your crews doing on that stretch of sidewalk between Walgreens and Walmart? Where the rock work is?
Oh, on what we affectionately call the slope. Well, we explored about seven years ago and even a little bit before that, erosion control for that slope. It was about a million-dollar project to do erosion control. So we opted to take a little different approach and do sediment control. And that's why we did the, uh, ready rock wall there that has capacity to collect sediment behind it. And then in another area, uh, we've done some other sediment mitigation. Well, over time, sediment builds up and especially with the rains we've had lately. Uh, they've been cleaning out the sediment there and hauling it off. And so far, we got seventeen dump truck loads full of dirt out of there. And, uh, so it's, it's sediment, uh, maintenance there, sediment control that we're doing, so.
Kip?
Speaking of the rain, I have a little water update. As you all know, two-thirds of our water is locally supplied, the other third is trans mountain water. With all the rain and, um, last year's rain, local water levels are up four to five feet from, compared to two thousand and thirteen, which, when we experienced our lowest, um, water levels. So, and overall, it's, it's been trending upward since the rains of last year, so that's a good thing. Also, um, our augmentation water, our trans mountain water, uh, storage, we've had to move a lot of water in the last couple of months, uh, more than usual. And just to give you some quick facts, in two thousand and twelve, we had eight hundred and fifty-one acre feet in storage. In two thousand and thirteen, that dropped to three hundred and seventeen acre feet in storage. And currently, we have six hundred and seventy-one acre feet in storage. And that is about ninety-six percent full of the three reservoirs. So we're sitting very good. We had a very good snow pack this year and, um, we will not be in water restrictions, so.
Good news.
That's all I had, Dave.
Okay, thank you. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce to you the city's new finance director and city treasurer, Wally Dingwell. Wally, if you could stand quickly, thank you. Uh, Wally has a great background in financial management, accounting, mostly in the public sec- I'm sorry, mostly in the private sector. But recently, he has been... sec- I'm sorry, mostly in the private sector, but recently, he has been working with some nonprofits. Wally and his wife Angela live in Divide, and he'll be starting for us on July 30th. So Wally advised me yesterday that he would be here at the meeting, and rather just than announce it, I thought I would introduce him to you. We're excited for his leadership and for his experience, and we can't wait for him to get on board.
Welcome, Wally.
And lastly, what I'd like to do is review quickly with both the council and the community what the process will be for the selection of a new mayor. And I've prepared some written comments, so forgive me if my, if I read most of these, but it's important that the community understand this very accurately. Our city charter governs how the city fills a vacancy on council. Upon the vacancy of a council member's position, including the mayor, the city must fill that position within 30 days from the date of vacation. In this instance, the date of vacation is July 14th, 2014, and therefore, the position must be filled by August 13th, 2014. Our intent is to fill the vacated mayor's position at the regularly-scheduled city council meeting on August 7th. I may have a change to that intent as we near the end of this discussion this evening. The city will advertise the vacancy, seeking letters of interest, of intent, and motivation. This has already begun. We've posted the advertisement on our website and on Facebook, and an ad will appear in the July 23rd edition of the Courier. Letters must be received via email or hard copy to City Hall by noon on Friday, August 1st. This will allow us to include them in your council packets for the next regularly-scheduled meeting, which is August 7th. There's no guidance on where in the meeting city council would choose that next mayor, what the interview process would be, and then the discussion and the selection. Historically, for appointment of a non-mayor council seat, we have made the interviews and appointments at the beginning of the meeting, as we did with Councilman Schaefer, and he immediately came up, he had been given the packets, and he was prepared for the meeting. After consideration, I think it will be best to conduct the interviews and make the appointment at the end of a regularly-scheduled meeting. All candidates will receive the packets, but to ask someone to jump into the mayor's seat at the beginning of a meeting and run a meeting may be uncomfortable. The mayor pro tem would conduct the August 7th meeting, and the new mayor would be seated at the end of the meeting, giving the new mayor a couple of weeks before the next council meeting. Again, I may have a suggestion that would change that. The selection process will be done by paper ballot. The order of interviews will be conducted randomly, based on the city clerk's drawing names from a hat. A majority vote by the council present is required to appoint the new mayor. I need to rephrase that. A majority vote by the remaining council must occur to appoint the new mayor. If there are six of you here, it takes four to appoint. If there are five of you here, it takes four to appoint. If there are only four of you here, then you have to unanimously choose the next mayor. It appears at this point that we would have five council members present on, at the August 7th meeting. I've heard from a couple of you, so I just wanna, before I continue the discussion, if it's okay, I'd like to canvas. I know Councilmember Schaefer will not be here on the 7th. I know Councilmember Carlson will be. Mayor Pro Tem, you'll be here? Councilmember Bravetto on August 7th? Matthews? So, okay, thank you. One of the things I'd like to propose is that you consider having a special meeting for this selection. If we do it on the 7th of August, which you certainly can choose to do, Councilman Schaefer will not be here, and it will take four votes to seat a new mayor. He's back, and we could meet on August 11th, 12th, or 13th, and still meet the criteria as established in the charter for seating that position 30 days after the vacation. So before we end this evening's discussion, I'd like your guidance on whether we conduct this selection process on the 7th with only five of you here, or perhaps on the 11th, 12th, and 13th with all six of you here. I outlined several different options in case there are ties and things like that, and we'll worry about that as the, as the process continues. So what I'd like to do, Mayor Pro Tem, before we finish this evening, is make a decision on if you want to do this process on the 7th, or whether you would like to delay it and have a special meeting on the 11th, 12th, or 13th, which is Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday of the following week.
And would it be possible if we decide to postpone it until one of those three dates? One of those three dates that we would also include a special meeting to discuss the bond issue?
Absolutely. We could, we, we, based on the timing, and I'm having, I'm having a meeting with, or a phone conversation with our bond counsel and financial advisor tomorrow, so if the timing works and it supports the follow-on activity, we could combine both of those meetings. That's true.
Well, the problem is that the first reading of the ordinance has to be on the 7th.
That's true.
And so any guidance as to how the ordinance should be structured would have to occur before the 7th.
And we're, we're determining what, how, what level of detail we need in that ordinance. If, if it's simply an ordinance for the council to put it on a ballot issue, then that's relatively simple. But we'll, I'll note better tomorrow what level of detail we need. So we may have to have a second special meeting in order to accomplish that.
But at a minimum, I'd, I'd propose that we postpone the appointment of the new mayor until the 11th, 12th, or 13th, after we determine, amass the group and figure out which of those three days. Straw poll, if everyone is in favor of that?
Yeah, that's fine. Is the public invited to that special?
Oh, absolutely. It's a special meeting, is a public meeting, and the August 7th meeting was a public meeting as well. But the process is yours. It's not one that necessarily where you solicit public comment. You will hear inter- you will interview the applicants, and then you make your decision. So it's not a public process in that sense. It's not a vote from the public, it's your vote.
Ken?
Yes, sir?
I, I just wanted to be clear for myself and the public, I think, both. The appointment is specifically for mayor, not for council position, and then we don't move them into the mayor's position. It's specifically for mayor.
That is correct.
If a council member had left, like when I came in, then it would be a council position.
That's correct, but the underlying governing part of the charter tells us that a council member is a council member is a council member, and you're, you fill a position. Well, it just so happens that this position is the mayor's position, and so that's what, that's what this process will fill. If the new mayor were selected internally from the council, then we take the next step in the next series of meetings, we re-advertise for a vacant council member position, and then we would fill that position utilizing the same process.
And that, that was one of my concerns when I talked to you before, was that we're only allowed to select two vacancies in a two-year period between elections. If, if we went with your approach and ended up having to have a follow-on meeting to select a council member to take the place of one of the council members that had become elected mayor, selected as mayor, then we would have run out of the two, okay? And if there was, in the next 20 months, somebody else had to leave for some reason, we would have to spend all the $15,000 for a special election.
That's an interesting question. If, if one of you were to become, to, to fill the mayor's position, it would be till the end of that period, and I would, I'm gonna ask our city attorney to think about that, because it's an appointment from within, and so I'm not sure if it would count as one of those appointments or not, but we can work through that. But your point is correct. We can only have two appointed positions, and if it goes beyond that, then there has to be a special election to fill a vacant position.
And I saw the only way of overcoming that is when we have the initial selection, it would be just to replace, like you said, a council member is a council member is a council member. And then we would have seven people that among us seven, we would then vote on who would be mayor, like we vote Mayor Pro Tem.
That's not the way the charter...
Yeah, that's a...
I was looking at the charter, and it's kinda vague.
Well...
It is.
We have to do it within 30 days after the resignation of our previous mayor.
Right, and I think we could still do that. It's just a question of, I mean, it's something to consider, and, and I'm just putting it forward. Either way is fine with me.
So really, what we're deciding tonight is whether to postpone to the 11th, 12th, or 13th the selection of the new mayor. And I think we've all agreed that we'll do that, and we'll allow David to figure out which of those three days that we'll do that on.
And I appreciate that, 'cause I would like to be involved in the process, but I got some hard requirements with large deposits made.
So I'll get an email out to you tomorrow, and I'm hoping that of those three nights, we'll all be here for that, and then we can, we'll post that meeting. That allows us not to change the submission date for the applicants, which I did not want to do, 'cause we've already advertised that. Okay. Do you have any questions about the process of the selection, just what your responsibilities are?
You outlined it really well in your email.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's basically what I just repeated this evening. Mayor Pro Tem, that's all your staff has this evening.
Okay. Going once. Otherwise, we'll adjourn this meeting at 6:00 until 8:00 o'clock.
Is that a record?
No.
That's not a record.
Very short.